Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alden Bochard? Alden Plank?
Here.
Alden Oden?
Here.
Alden Bell?
Here.
Alden Wilson?
Here.
And Alden Lewis?
Here.
I get a motion for approval of December 5th, 2023, meeting minutes, please. So, have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So, have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none. Appointments to the boards and commissions, we have none. Scheduled public comments is Jeremy Lindsay and Michelle Nichols, reference city code section 9-365-3. Please state your name and address.
Michelle Nichols, 509 Peace Johnson. So, we came in June requesting an amendment to code 93653 to at least decrease the restriction to adopt the Boone Code, Boone County Code for dust-free eye peeling. The board opted no action, all good, that's how it works. But over the next few days, we had a phone call with the mayor, which had two key statements. Just apply for the variance and it'll be fine, leading us to believe that a variance would be a formality. Not quite the case. And I'm only enforcing what takes place in my administration. Again, fair enough, that also seems to be how the process works. We applied for the variance, we did not make the deadline for the July meeting, were notified that there would be no August meeting. Okay. We were not notified of the September meeting until someone pointed it out to me from the community that it had already been put in the Boone County Journal. I spoke with Kyle and he said, well, the package just went out today. We probably should have been notified, or I feel we should have been notified when it went to the journal. I also pointed out that we would not be in town and he said, we'll set up a caller, a link at the time. We got a phone call. The city presented their side to deny the variance related to a lack of or unfulfilled building permits. I'll circle back to those in a minute. Along with implying that Jeremy had ceded the lot and consistently goes against the city and their code. We presented our request for a variance and attempted to say that we had not ceded the lot and a board member spoke up on the Board of Adjustment and said, there clearly is grass growing, so I'm not arguing this point with you. Let's get to that there was a yard present and weeds will grow anywhere and everywhere, we all know that. We did not cede the lot, but we were not received. Nor did we have any open building permits or work being done without a permit. I did request to know what work was done without a permit? And how do I know that the board based their denial information on this, what the city provided? Heard an email from Kyle, quote, "Staff recommended to the Board of Adjustment that a temporary variance be granted, knowing Jeremy intends to sell the lot." The Board of Adjustment disagreed with this simply due to the continual nature of Jeremy to ignore the city in all matters of code compliance or reverence. While it predates my time with the city, this goes all the way back to building his bake shop without a building permit and occupying the same space without an occupancy permit, which clearly did bias the board's outcome in denying our request. Now, let's look at the building permit. My first interaction with Darren, city inspector, was him coming into the shop and telling me that we had an open building permit and had not fulfilled it. So, we'll look at the building permit. 2019, in the name of Mark Paul. It was not a permit that was ever approved. Matter of fact, it was given back to the inspector for more information, pre Darren. So, that permit, not transferable, long before our ownership. It is a null, void, and moot point. Then, after multiple conversations with Darren, he insisted that we hadn't built the shop. We did not build anything, nor did we remodel or reconstruct. So, therefore, assuming that we would need a new occupancy permit is null because the code says, "Construction or considerable restructure," none of which we did. He had a previous business partner fill out a permit and it's labeled "Extension of Permit." Of what permit? There was no permit in place, so there was nothing to extend. Along with Darren signed it May 9th and the business partner signed it May 19th. Okay, again, completely inappropriate, not enforceable. Remember, we're only talking about enforcing what takes place during this administration. Our mayor took office in April of '22, Kyle took office in April of '22. Therefore, all of it long before any of this administration. But again, zero construction or restructuring took place on this building. That building is as it sits when this administration took place. So, to bias the Board of Adjustment 100%, making it appear that we have consistently gone against Ashland code, did bias the board and resulted in the denial of our variance request. It was also mentioned to the Board of Adjustment that Jeremy had gravelled the whole lot. Now, don't get me wrong, gravel's gravel. I will 100% admit that we did not know gravel was against the city ordinance. We thought dust-free, eye-peeling. But might I point out that the lot is 187 foot deep, less than 85 foot is gravel. Again, I understand gravel's gravel, but it does go to the exaggeration of yet another instance. We would not expect that we would need an occupancy permit. That building has been there long before us and occupied by multiple businesses. So, no, we would not think that we would need a different occupancy permit. No construction, no changes. But we're going to circle back that only enforcing what occurs during my administration. Therefore, any issue that the city had with the shop or construction before our ownership, before this administration, 100% biased the Board of Adjustment. In an additional email from Kyle, "We have not fined Jeremy at all, even though we have multiple, have had multiple opportunities to do so by, as required by code. Since the denial, we have still not fined him." In another email, Kyle states, "The options available to you are to pave the parking lot or cease all use." Upon denial of the variance, we put cones up, ceasing all use of the lot. I will say that on the back half of the lot, the flower stand did continue to operate, but we did not use any gravel area, which is not against code. Therefore, the insinuation that the city is being nice for not finding Jeremy is completely empty as there is no basis for the fine, but it does add to harassment. Also stated from Kyle, "It is important to note that due to the avoidance of code compliance, an accident occurred on the lot in question." We had at least one, he has had at least one customer drive off the edge of the driveway due to his lot and causing it to flip onto two wheels. Not even close. And I do have pictures if anybody would like to see them. The driveway has a state-approved access and has been in place for over 30 years, so it is very much in compliance with the state. The lady did turn too sharp and slightly drove off into the ditch, but in no way did she flip onto two wheels, nor did the surface of the parking lot have anything to do with what occurred. Yet another exaggeration for the city to spend and we are disregarding the safety of the community. Now, let's take a look at the code. "Any lot existing prior to June of 2004 is considered non-conforming use. Such uses are permitted to exist until such a point of the use changes, they're abandoned, or altered." For example, a gravel parking lot can exist in Ashland if it existed prior to June of 2004 up until, or up until such a time it is no longer a parking lot or changes in size. At such a point, the owner would be required to bring the lot into compliance. Since we are only enforcing what has occurred during this administration, we will go to 509 Douglas. There's a portion of that property that was grass and it is now fully gravel and storage containers have been placed on, altering the use. 503 Douglas, for the last five years, has been vacant, non-functioning of any type. Prior to that, it was a private office for the owner, nursery area. It is now opened as a retail shop and smoke lounge, which would create considerable more traffic. Also, which is a change in the use of the property, triggering the requirement for it to be brought up to code. It was mentioned, they applied for a remodel permit, so they are exempt. Nothing in the code or the email from Kyle indicates that a remodel permit exempts them from code, nor was I able to locate a remodel permit. Then, let's go back to the city-owned lot of Bassin Road. Somewhere around 2008, it was constructed and altered significantly where it was enlarged, trees removed, and recycling bins placed. In 2000, somewhere between 2013 and 16, more trees removed, more gravel added. Present day, as it sits, all trees have been removed, the recycling bins have been removed, and it's now used for food truck events and public parking. A semi is parked there along with other business trucks not employed by the city. Thus, altering the use and size of the lot would void any grandfather or non-conforming clause and be required to be brought up to code. Might I also mention that the city watershed is in a commercial zone per the zoning map on the website, 2018, which also would require it to meet code. Why present all this? The inaccuracies presented by the city 100% bias the board, resulting in the denial of our variance, request for our variance. My goal, I would really very much like for us to come to a resolution on this and not have to move forward any further. I understand that the board is not required to take action, nor are they required to respond, but we do respectfully request a timely response, written response, as to whether we're not taking any action or if you will take action. But if not, let me leave you with this final piece of information. In the case State of Missouri versus Arman, found, "A city must follow the requirements and procedures of its own local zoning regulations. Otherwise, its amendment and other zoning decisions are invalid and unenforceable." And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for the comment. I have none. Introduction to the first reading, we have none. Old business, none. Moving on to new business. Resolution 102-02024-001, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lawber Municipal Law LLC for legal services. Staff report, please.
James just kind of whispered it over there, but maybe Todd needs to sing for his supper on this one. This is the engagement letter for city attorney services provided by Lawber Municipal, with Todd serving as city attorney. Obviously, when we do our appointments here in a couple of months, he'll be reappointed in that role, but this is just the annual engagement letter for Lawber. There's no proposed change to the hourly rate that we're currently being charged. What's that?
Can we lower that rate?
We're already at a discounted rate, apparently. So, it's all pretty straightforward.
Alright, any questions for staff? I get a motion approving, resolution 1022024-001, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lawber Municipal Law LLC for legal services. Have a second, please?
Second.
Alden Plank?
Nay.
Alden Oden?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
And Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Alright. Moving on, resolution 1022024-002, a resolution authorizing the Sutter's Mill Lift Station pump replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, before you this evening. We were seeking authorization to replace yet another failed lift station pump. This one from Sutter's Mill Lift Station on the east side of Highway 63. We've recently discovered that this pump is not working properly. Found that the impeller bearing was worn out. This pump is one of the few that are interchangeable with other pumps across town, particularly with Justin Lift Station and Lakeview Estates Lift Station on the east port. So, we verified that the, we recently replaced one at Justin, verified that the quote was identical with Band of Honor Engineering for $11,461. That will replace this pump, which is, we're from, correctly, 24 years old. So, we certainly had all this light usefulness out of it. That is, we also looked at the opportunity to repair that pump versus replace and Band of Honor advised us that it would not be feasible due to the age of the pump and that we would simply be wasting the diagnostic fee of approximately $500.
Any questions, James?
Do we just have bad luck or like, is this normal or, I mean, it just seems like it's been a while?
Well, we have 19 lift stations and a lot of it is aging. I mean, 24 years is relatively long for a sewer pump, a lift station pump. The average life cycle is 10 to 15 years. In the last several, this year, we've replaced a lot, but the majority of them were almost 20 or over 20 years old. So, we've actually been on a decent run. Long-term, as we continue to replace these aging pumps out, we'll be in a better position over the next several years to where we aren't having to replace a half dozen of better old lift station pumps each year, but this just happened to be the year.
Oh, Wood?
Is it common practice to put these type of items like on a replacement schedule or is it just?
Absolutely. So, one of the things that Mr. Conway and I were working on prior to his departure was the implementation of repair and placement budget line. This past year, we were attempting to fund that, but we had so many pumps go down that we weren't able to actually fund it. Ideally, working with our treasurer, we'll be able to take at the end of the year, whatever funds remain in lift station maintenance and repairs, say we don't expend $30,000. Rather than reset the budget and take that 30K and throw it back into repairs, we would like to utilize that as the seed fund, seed balance for a repair and replacement fund. Or to where we can utilize that for large-scale expenses such as the lift station pumps or various other, you know, when awards go down or things of that nature.
How many more do we have that are 20-plus years old?
So, we're currently working to determine that. In part of the, in working with Bartlett West on the facility plan, they identified all of our lift stations and, but we have not been able to glean exactly the age of all the pumps. So, unfortunately, it's a question I can't answer for you right now. We've got an approximate idea, but nothing that I would be able to quote right off the top of my head.
As far as a purchase order, would we have that to reference on?
I'm sorry?
Do we have like a purchase order reference number somewhere that we?
Well, this pump was the original pump, it's followed by the developer, was Sutter's Mill's built.
Oh.
So, and that's, that, but, well, let me back that up. That's not quite accurate. There was some horse trading, you remember I mentioned that it was an identical pump with Lakeview Estates Lift Station and Justin Lane Lift Station? Because we went back and the 24 years did not make sense. Sutter's Mill has not been in existence for 24 years. That pump had been pulled from one of those other lift stations several years ago. My guess is Justin, where it was swapped out or something to that effect occurred. Unfortunately, that was several years ago and we've not been able to obtain any records to indicate why or when that happened. So, I want to go back. Ideally, I would love to be able to keep a better track of these lift stations and that's something that city administrator and I have been working on with the hope of implementation as an asset management software in the future to keep a better track of what our lifestyle, what our lift station's current status is, which ones we should be expecting to need some repair, replacement, and utilizing those analytics, we can kind of better forecast that and budget accordingly.
Any other questions?
Just with the type of pump that you need to buy to replace it? If in looking at the future, if we were able to start the consolidation, is it a whole different type of pump or could those that we're currently purchasing that may still have some life left be utilized in that?
That's a good question. Yes and no. This one in particular, because of the existing, the other three lift stations that it is interchangeable with, is one of the better opportunities. And the grand scheme of things, it's a relatively small pump, it's five horsepower, if I remember correctly. Yeah, a five horsepower, but the other thing is that a five horsepower here is not the same as a five horsepower there. There's a lot of different factors that go into it, the flow levels, what they call the head, how much it has to pump uphill to get to where it becomes, goes back to the interceptor and becomes, flows into a gravity man again. So, I don't know. I mean, long-term, if we're able to regionalize our lift stations, you know, several years down the road, we can eliminate a lot of the lift stations that we have. We certainly want to reduce the amount of lift stations. 19 is just obscene, it's very costly for maintenance. By regionalizing, we can hopefully drive that number down to 10, sub 10 even if we're lucky. But it's also a very large expense upfront to get to that point.
Any other question? I get a motion approving, resolution 1022024-002, a resolution authorizing the Sutter's Mill Lift Station pump replacement. Have a second, please?
Second.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Alright.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Oden?
Aye.
And Alden Plank?
Aye.
A resolution, moving on, a resolution number 1022024-003, a resolution authorizing the change order number three to M. Landscaping Construction LLC for Perry Avenue Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is consideration for approval of change order number three, which is merely a deadline extension on various facets of the Perry Avenue project. As you're all aware, the road is complete and open for traffic. This is simply the remainder with the sidewalk, final grading, seating, seating and strawing. Ideally, we would have been able to get that sidewalk completed prior to the end of the year, but fortunately, that wasn't the case mainly because we weren't allowed, we weren't able to put concrete trucks on the new road in time to start pouring that sidewalk. Proofs have been out, they started pouring the sidewalk last week, they were out again today, they anticipate pouring again tomorrow. If the weather cooperates, they believe they can have the sidewalk completed by the end of this week. Contractor requested an extension of one month to complete the sidewalk, but they understand that it's imperative to utilize the warmer weather days that we have been blessed with this week since we are in January. And then, when it comes to the seed and straw and final grading, going into winter, that's going to be a pretty difficult task to hold into. I mean, just because of trying to get machines in and out and creating a muddy mess. By extending that to April 30th, that gives the contractor time to come in whenever the weather is cooperative and complete the final grading, seeding, and strawing and remove all of the stormwater protective measures, self-fence, gutter buddies, things of that nature.
Any issue with the Perry Avenue?
No, not that I'm aware of. Received really good feedback from all the involved parties with, particularly with the school district in Rankin. MoDOT has been as happy as MoDOT gets. They've been great to work with though and they were in support of this change order also. They wanted to make sure that we're being fair to everybody involved, the city and the contractor.
Have you tried moving those trailers out of there yet?
I'm sorry, what trailers?
Trailers, the lines area?
I have not.
I just wonder how they're?
I mean, we've met with them and talked to them about that and he's aware that he's going to have to do some finagling to get it out, but.
Yeah, we did discuss the ability of those mobile homes to be able to negotiate the roundabout and he advised that the ones that he has down there are approximately 50 feet long, which that roundabout is designed to be able for a 53-foot AT wheeler to be able to negotiate through properly. We expressed concern about the 80-footers that you sometimes see and he advised that he has no intentions of moving any of those larger ones down there.
How large was that jet bridge that got stuck?
Up on the airport?
I'm not familiar.
We might investigate that and just, I don't know if we would respond to that. My recollection is that the jet bridge people, they were hauling the jet bridge to the airport and my recollection is they got told to go in backwards, in reverse, that would, and then they got, they got stuck.
I don't know, assuming that was a MoDOT operation, the one of 63 to Route H?
And they had to widen the road?
It didn't go well, so we might figure out what happened there and try to learn from that, just to be on the safe side.
No jet bridges are allowed on Perry Avenue.
Well, I think they were told that it was going to all work out, but it didn't.
Got a question?
I haven't seen anything about lighting, like light posts on the, on the ferry, is that, is that part?
Yeah, light, lighting is not, was not part of this project. Long-term, that would be a conversation that we would need to have with the Amren as they currently maintain and service and own all of the light poles, lamp poles within Ashland, correct, Garland?
Them with electric.
Yeah, that and the smaller areas where electric exists. So, that would be an expansion upon the agreement with those entities, which would be hammered in that section of town. Long-term, we would certainly love to see that be a lighted area. We'll have the sidewalk that runs the length of it from all the way up to, as the properties develop out in East Ashland Plaza, all the way back up to Broadway and then pass the city-owned lake and the residential area there and then ultimately the school campus and whatever else may develop to the south and east of that.
I mean, to me, it just looks, at night, just looks really unsafe as far as people feeling comfortable. You know, when the sidewalk gets built, especially with the college there and things like that, people want to go to break time, you know, snack, whatever, but I think, then lighting, I think would really highlight that nice piece of road too.
I don't disagree with you. I will have to reach out to the folks at Amren and see what those options look like for us.
Appreciate that.
I get a motion approving, resolution 1022024-003, a resolution authorizing change order number three to M. Landscaping Construction LLC for Perry Avenue Extension project. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Alden Plank?
Aye.
Alden Oden?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
And Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to reports. My reports can be brief. Kyle and I will sit down this week and we'll get you an answer to what we need to do, okay? We'll get a think here obviously. That's my report. City administrator report.
A few things, just a reminder, if you have any desire to attend some of the upcoming Missouri Municipal League events, let us know so we can get you registered. Legislative Conference, which is in Jeff, it's on February 20th, 21st. That one's pretty informative, give you an opportunity to get an understanding of what issues are potentially moving forward that have an impact on how we manage cities here in Missouri. So, good information there. Elected officials training, June 6th through 7th in Columbia. The annual conference in the fall, September 15th through 18th in Branson. So, obviously, the sooner we know on some of those, the easier it'll be for us. Obviously, the June and the September ones, we still have time to work those into the budget for next fiscal year. We have plenty of training budget available for the February 1st, if there's any desire to go to that. Other than that, the bond issue, next month, those items are starting to roll out on Facebook, so please share those as you see them. Next week, we'll start our first public engagements with speaking with Chamber and SBDC. We're scheduled to speak at the Optimus Club on the 20th, I believe. Their breakfast, yeah, 20th. And then, we also have events out there. And then, we also have events out there for the seventeenth and twenty-eighth. So, please share those as you see them come across Facebook. Direct people to those posts or the information on our website if they have questions. We've done our best to put together a summary of the important facts about that bond issue and that bond question. So, welcome to point people our direction if they have any questions they're having trouble answering.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to the city attorney report.
Two quick points. January twenty-fifth, I'm giving an ethics lecture in Columbia to the city administrators group. It's a subset of MML. The subject will be campaigning for city things. You heard me mention this before. You can educate, but can't advocate. So, I'm going to be talking about where those lines are. Happy to provide those materials to you all. I know you have the bond issue. Secondly, there was a controversial state law that may be, sleeping in public, illegal with very significant penalties to cities. Just before Christmas, the Missouri Supreme Court unanimously struck that down. So, that is my report.
Please chief report, or intro, please chief.
More, no news is good news. Nothing exciting. I've given you the numbers for this month. I am working, one of the things I am working on, hopefully, if Mr. gives them, we can give you numbers that are at least more interesting than these. These are all pretty mundane, but I've been working with joint communications on me learning how to utilize all the data they collect. They collect a bunch of data. We will always struggle here with statistical validity, right? There's things you can do in places where you've got thousands upon thousands of calls that we can't do here. But I think it's still be interesting to make sure that we are at least always examining available data to make sure we're deploying our resources where they need to be and in the right spot, and to identify, you know, problem locations, if there's things we can do about that. Sometimes humans are humans, and there's nothing we can do about it. But other times, there might be, it's easy for problem locations to kind of get skipped over when you've got six different people working over the course of the twenty-four-hour period, and we don't always connect those dots. So, that's just one of the things we're working on, along with next year's budget. And nothing exciting to report. So, any questions?
House staff and committee.
We're in the same boat we were in last month. Everybody's full on right now. We have a day timer every day, and then one night timer, half-time, and two night timers the other half, plus our sergeant's schedule is all over the map.
Anybody?
We've got four or five applications we're evaluating in the pipeline right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Any issues over New Jersey?
None that I know of. Yeah, I'm not aware. I know, you know, many years ago in Columbia, I always made sure I was under something solid when it hit midnight, because there's a lot of stuff going on, coming down somewhere. But I think people here in general are a little bit more responsible in that regard. So, we didn't have any trouble.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Almond. Almond Plank?
No report.
Almond Oden?
Haven't received any phone calls or emails about anything, so I haven't known anything.
That's all. Almond Bell?
No report.
Almond Wilson?
No report.
And Almond Lewis?
No report.
All right, moving on to general comments by the public. Do we have any? I get a motion to adjourn.
My question?
Have a second? Second. Almond Fable?